Okay, good evening, everyone. I call this planning board meeting to order. So the first thing. What our business tonight would be to review the draft minutes from April 1st. Does anybody have any amendments or changes or comments?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Russ, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
I will, yes.
Shall I abstain since I wasn't here in person or? I couldn't hear the audience comments all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm abstaining.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, yes. Okay, minutes are approved. Invitation for public comment. I don't see anybody, so I think we could jump right in with you, Frank. Yeah, please, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for participating and making things. I don't have a presentation or anything. I just was here mostly to talk to you about whether folks have reviewed what Soul Smart folks. Drafted for you, which is, and if not, I'm still at times, but it's the zoning review that Soul Smart did for Town of Temple. Not sure what sort of introduction I can give to the program if other board members are familiar with what the plan is here.
Yeah, it'd be great if you could maybe just give us a brief summary of maybe the goals and the purpose of it.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so I'm at Clean Energy New Hampshire and I'm at what's called a circle. So I work with 32 towns in the Manok region. And help them with everything from, well, now it's zoning, but it would be like a grant for installing solar in the town hall. Or doing energy audits on their buildings or. But I also work with schools and small businesses. There are four of us around the state. We each have about 30 to 40 towns. And our primary goal is to promote energy efficiency and help towns to do that. Part of our plan this year has been to partner with Soul Smart, which is an Oregon national organization, and they have a lot of experts in the planning and zoning. World, and they use a company called Cadmus as a partner to to review this. They're consultants for towns. And cities on their planning zoning related. Private. Soul Smart, Keene and Peterborough are towns that are certified in, or they're designated Soul Smart. Um, towns, they've gone through this process with the Soul Smart folks, reviewed their zoning. Made it so that it's easier for solar developers and residents and businesses to. To put in solar, but also puts in checks and balances for those who have concerns around installations of solar. They also, as part of this program, review. Their reviews your zoning, which they've done, and that's what, nobody has a copy, but I got three extra copies I can hand out. Of what zoning in each town like Temple has in place to adjust solar. Temple does not have any.
We only have a permit.
Right.
Application.
Yeah, so, and they are going to renew that process as well, and that's the second half of this program, which will be coming in May. Is to review the permit process. For developers or property owners and for the planning board and zoning board. So that they, there's no mystery around, well, what do I need to do? I need a checklist. Electrician's coming, what sort of permits do I need? That sort of thing. So they'll, they'll be covering that, not this week, but the next. Presentation that they do, and all of you are welcome to join all of these presentations, and if. It hasn't been, the link to these presentations hasn't been shared, then definitely ask me. Or any, a couple of folks have attended them, so they might have a link as well.
I think we share that with everybody. I think the email goes to every board member. Yeah.
The select board has been dealing with this for a few years now. And people offering so. Ask for permit to do that with the spec board.
Right, so do you have a building inspector or work with a building inspector in town?
We have a building inspector, yes.
Okay.
Well, we've had a few solar permits. It comes to the spec board and that.
Right, right.
I believe our building inspector wrote our checklist, right? Put together the checklist. Was it a well that put together the checklist?
No, we go by a building application.
Building permit.
Yeah.
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 You know. So there's going to be an upcoming, one of the sessions will be on permitting and the permit process. And you might want to invite the building inspector, whoever that might be, to attend. I know Soul Smart's been reaching out to NHPOA, which is officials association in New Hampshire and country building inspectors, remember. To see what local questions and issues people might have in Dayton, New Hampshire, so. Maybe a little presentation.
That's online, right?
Presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one of the Soul Smart sessions.
Yeah.
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 And they've, they've reviewed the permitting process in all of the towns, and they have a report online.
Jim, can you, is that something you could use to contact Will?
Yeah, so do we know which one specifically I should invite him to?
May 15th is what it looks like.
I don't have the schedule on.
Yeah, I have, I have it here.
Yeah, so, okay.
May, yeah, um, May 15th, it's a Thursday from noon to 1:30 via Zoom. It's in the, um, I don't know what it's called, the cohort guide.
Yeah, there's a cohort guide and there's a folder, a shared folder that all of you have access to. And it's Temple, there's a folder just for Temple, that has the zoning review, the permit classes review, all of the checklist. Types of things for the building permit, that sort of thing is all in there.
Yeah, I think it's in our Dropbox for the, for the meeting too, so, yeah.
Yeah, so take a look at those before that meeting. You might have him look at it too. There's a document called the. I, I can, whoever's reaching out, you said you're reaching out.
Yeah.
So this is. It's the, this is the one that talks to the checklist. Here, you can get one copy of that. It's in that shared folder as well, if you want, go in there. But. That's the 15th. This Thursday, they're going to be going over. The zoning itself, and they might touch on. The review that they've done for all of the towns, not going to dive into each town, there's 34 towns as part of the project, so. But they'll, they'll take questions too. And there's also next Thursday, every Thursday, other than when they have the classes, is a, an office hours. And then also, and you can just drop in and ask specific questions on, on the zoning review or anything you like, that's covered in this program. I have printed copies as a zoning review if anybody wants, when that doesn't feel comfortable jumping into the shared folder.
I, I have, did everyone have a copy? Yeah.
You do, okay. Have you had a chance to read through them at all? Suggestions?
Yep.
Yeah. Did you have any questions or concerns or things that you might want to bring up on Thursdays? Training, what I can bring, bring back to them?
I have a couple of questions that are just more general, I guess. I'd like to understand, are some of the other towns you're working with similar to Temple? In the fact that we don't have anything around solar?
Oh, yeah, yeah, plenty of towns don't have them. So you're not alone.
And, and I guess, kind of, the second piece of that question is. I mean, I, I understand. I mean, we certainly have people putting solar in, but I don't think it's necessarily a problem, but we, and we don't have any zoning around that. Is, what is the reason that we would want to add all this language to our zoning?
Um, it's. So they break it down into four sections. There's the, there's a primary use. Solar, which would be a larger or even smaller primary use of the property, then there's accessory. It's not only different than any other accessory use or primary use that you have in your zoning already for other things.
Right.
It's just that towns don't have that, so if somebody wanted to put it on their property as an accessory use. There's no precedent on, in the zoning, then somebody could willingly reject their application because they don't. I mean, maybe not this board, but a future board may, may, may be biased in that direction, but it's also designed to protect. Against, you know, overzealous development of solar too. If you have certain restrictions that you want to have in place, like. Somebody here is from the Conservation Commission, they might want to have some language in there that talks to overlays, like steep slopes or. Or wetlands, that sort of thing. So it's designed to protect other elements of town as well.
Right.
And aesthetics too, you know, there may be some aesthetics, things that you can put in there.
And is that something that, is that what you'll be working with us on to develop the language appropriate for that?
Yeah, so that I won't be, but the staff at Soul Smart, they're, they're open to having conversations, meeting with the board. When it comes time towards the end of the program, to help to draft the, the. You know, so for their town, yeah, and they'll go over it with you if you request it. There's, they'll go over this zoning review and you can. You know, throw really hard questions at them, like, why would we want to do this? Or why wouldn't we want to do this? Or our town is really small and we don't have a problem with X, you know? Why should we have this restrictive, you know?
Well, I guess that's, that's my concern is like currently we don't have a restriction.
Right.
Not really a problem, right? But I, I mean, of course.
Whatever.
There's situations where that.
Questions on application.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, right.
Well, and I'll give you an example, so. There are some solar developers, when I say developers, I mean installers.
Yeah.
That have gone into towns and wanted to put in solar on residents or business, either on a roof or a field, and. There was no clear zoning or direction or permit checklist or anything like that, so the town just rejected it. And so a lot of developers and installers will tend to avoid towns. That don't have zoning specific to this, because they don't want to deal with the hassle of drafting a proposal for the, for the property owner, you know, quoting it out. And presenting it to the planning board, have it rejected, and then having to go to the zoning board, they don't have the time.
Yeah.
So they'll just skip to the next town. So a town might get left out that might want solar with their town.
Sure.
In a scenario, and it's happened before, and I'm not talking about three or five acre developments, I'm talking about smaller arrays.
Okay.
Other towns that didn't have well thought out zoning, like what these guys can help you guys with. Is have, have had some random restrictions, like no more than 20 panels. What does, what does that mean? I mean, I have 22 panels on my house and you can't see them, so why, why are you setting a random 20 panel limit?
Yeah.
Willing and ill, it's, it, it makes it really hard.
So Frank, so we're here on Temple Mountain, and. So right at the moment, if, if one of the landowners on Temple Mountain wanted to clear cut 10 acres and put a solar array. We, there's nothing we can do to stop that. The side of our mountain would have a solar array.
Right, right now, there, there is nothing that says they can or can't do it.
Yeah.
But a developer. You know, they may not even want to do that anyway, if there's some zoning telling them what guidance. On the other hand, they may just come crashing in and put 50 acres, and because there's nothing says they can't. So this is why it goes both ways, you know, you, you have the conservation side of things and you have the development side, and. This meets it in the middle and addresses it town by town, and these get, these, these. Consultants at Soul Smart can help you navigate that. Once they'll, they'll go over the review that they created for you. You can ask that specific question. Those are questions you get all the time. You can bring it up Thursday, bring up that question on Thursday. Part of the conversation.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not necessarily anti-solar, I.
Right, right.
Put solar panels on my camp this summer, so.
Yeah.
I, I just, I, I'm just, there's a big difference between. A solar array on a couple acres of land that you can't really see in somebody's field. Or on their barn roof than there is on the side of a mountain or, you know.
I don't think on a select board would be waiting for the planning board approval before we make a decision on a building application.
They would have to come to the planning board with a site plan or something like that. You wouldn't for residential solar on your roof, you wouldn't need a site plan review, you would just need a building permit likely. But that's what that checklist is for, but something like that, you would probably want to have a site plan review by the planning board to make sure that. The wetlands or the steep slopes or the aesthetics are addressed on the site plan before you approve it. And that's where adding some language around that, it's really helpful, and that's where these guys can help.
Yeah, because I, I think if somebody owned land in the mountain district, and they wanted to build a house and put solar array, or solar on the roof. I don't, I don't know how it would be fair for us to tell them they couldn't when somebody.
For that, for a residential.
For residential, yeah, but, but if they wanted to, like I alluded to, like, you know, if they wanted to clear cut.
The whole side.
Ten, five or 10 acres, they have a solar array, that's a different story than putting 20 panels on your roof.
Right, and that's why they break it out into different types. They have the primary use, the secondary use, they have the rooftop, and they have the ground now. And so they have primary and secondary use for. Rooftop is going to be secondary use, but it's probably part of the primary, you know, it's allowed, but if you have, if you have it as a. Primary use on a piece of property that doesn't have anything, that's where you can have separate language in your zoning ordinance that addresses something like that.
To go through site plan review.
Right, exactly, yeah, so they have, and they have a path to, to that, and you have a path to addressing the concerns. So.
So are, are you working with Renewable Energy Task Force right now on their proposed solar array down the street?
I've been, my intention is to meet with them.
Okay.
I haven't been able to yet, and that's on me, but I will have a conversation with them.
Yeah.
We've mentioned it, yeah.
So it's just something for us to be aware of, that they're, they're looking at putting. Solar panels on to support the town buildings is my understanding, and the site they're looking at is. Next to the baseball field down by the elementary school. Which would be, that would be a, it's town owned land, but I, so there's different rules around that being, you know, town owned, but.
Right.
Just.
Yeah, and it also makes you.
Yeah, but it's near, I don't know, you may know this more than, better than I do, but it's near like a main. Lines to connect to, so.
Yeah, the three-phase power is, is tough to come by, and that's required for these larger arrays.
Yeah.
That's probably why they're locating there, they wouldn't consider it if it wasn't, if it had three-phase power.
So that, that.
If that's getting power. That's. And I.
Separate from the zoning.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking about, if you, if I was putting panels up, putting panels up a mile from where I'm going to use the panels. Seems to me would be a lot of loss.
But aren't you just selling the power back and then.
That's, that's true. Just using it, tying it to the grid, feeding it, taking it from the grid, yeah, that would be.
So the way they're probably, I don't know, speculate for this property, but the way other towns have done it is, they, they, like I'm working one on, with two towns now, they're. Providing them on cap landfills, and the landfills don't use any power. But the state just passed a law that allows group net metering on municipal solar, so you can. Produce a ton of power at your cap landfill or at the back of a ball field or wherever, fully disconnected from any facilities. But you can group net meter to your town hall, your car station, your maintenance buildings.
Get the benefits.
Right, exactly, so you just add those accounts to it. And that's what allows, that's why the three phases coming together with the group net metering has made it a lot more. Palatable for towns and installers, but having zoning in place. It, it would help the town to have. Have a fair conversation around development of the town property too, like if there's something about, you know. Blocking a do shed or something like that. Technically, you wouldn't have to buy that as on town on property, but it's a good thing, good idea to follow your own zoning and that sort of thing.
Right, right.
Yeah, we could, we'll still, do something that's.
You know.
And do you know, when they did the zoning review, did they look at our master plan chapters at all?
They glanced at the master plan, but their primary focus was the zoning itself.
Okay.
There is language in here, but while they, they talked to the man, they talked to including it in your master plan. But this particular session is focused mostly on the zoning.
Okay, well, I, I was wondering, because in the zoning review, it talks about the purpose and. You know, there's sections in our master plan that. Encourage solar and renewable energy development, so I, I know there should be some syncing between the two.
Right, correct, yeah, you want to look at your master plan and incorporate, if not already, some of the language, maybe that's in the purpose of the zoning ordinance. Language so that they're lined up. Usually, yeah, the master plan comes first, and then the zoning is built over the.
Right.
Master plan, so.
Right, so it's in our master plan. I just didn't know if they had referred to that or saw that when they proposed the language.
Um, they look at the master plan.
Okay.
But a lot of towns haven't addressed it in their master plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have it in three places. Our parks. Yeah, three places. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, they, they do look at the master plan as well. The primary focus in this session is the zoning and the permit process, permitting and checklist. There's a lot of towns on that checklist, or there any groups. And find actors and building inspectors, they'll know how to navigate it. But I would advise everyone who's depending on Thursday to read through the zoning review that they created for the town. Make note on it, and then, you know, if you have questions, you can bring them up on Thursday, on Monday, as a July session, section, so. And if, if you don't get a chance to ask a question, you can send them to me, and I can, I can have you talk to Zach or whoever at Soul Smart. To directly, as I said, for you to very open the emails to these with all the towns, so.
So as far as next steps. We sign this, that we've read it, that has to be done.
Yeah.
And then. Members attend the session to pen or watch the recording, I guess, on Thursday, and then what comes next?
Well, then comes the permit checklist process, but also the, and I didn't bring a copy of your assessment, which is that spreadsheet.
Yeah.
As you look at the baseline assessment.
Yeah.
That just outlines all of the places where you can get points. We're not concerned about points.
I wasn't either, so I didn't look at it. I wasn't either, so I didn't look at it.
No, and that's not the whole point of this program right now. If you wanted to go so far as Peterborough, Keene, and go through all of that with them and get points and designation, fine, but. Not important. You can land at the baseline tab on that spreadsheet, that's in the hole.
Yeah.
Just to get an idea, but. Those are the two primary, and Sarah Brockley, line manager at Clean Energy New Hampshire, is good about sending out emails. Here's, here's your homework for this week, or for, before the next session, and she sent one to a couple of you, I think.
Yeah.
You probably got one. Take a look at that, click on the links in there, and I think it means that she references pretty basic.
Turn it around.
It's a different Sarah.
Sarah Brock.
She's our next, uh, next agenda.
Is.
Bruce would sign it, yep. And it's not signing, it's just acknowledging that we've received it and we've read it. It's not saying we're, we're not agreeing to end the changes proposed, we're just saying.
It's just sort of, yeah, we want to make sure that planning boards and zoning boards are both. Take, read through it, put some thought into it, and then just sign, say, you do that. And you scan it in, you can either sign it digitally online, or you just scan it, or this is a half an hour, scan it in, totally up to you.
That's the view, that's the instructions, and then here's the review.
Yeah, that's, I read this.
Sorry, I missed what you just said. Does he sign it?
I said you can sign it digitally, or you can sign it here and scan it in yourself, or you can sign it and give it to me, and I can scan it in. Not a problem, I can handle that, totally up to the boards.
I highlighted that, so I don't, maybe there's a clean copy, or maybe you just want the signature page?
No, I. I might have a copy here, if, if you wanted to sign it. They will run that too, so. I do have one here, if you, if you want to assign this one, you can.
Do you want to sign it, or do you need more time to?
Um, yeah, I mean, I read it real quick tonight before I came here. That's, I still don't really understand. A lot of, you know, I mean, I probably shouldn't have been involved in some of the meetings that you were. The UBIT attending.
Just one meeting.
Yeah, that was it?
Yeah, just the one meeting, yeah.
It was recorded.
Well, I mean, nothing seemed, nothing seems. It's all straightforward as far as. Yeah, yeah, that's the.
My, let me take, is it, it, it gives us a driving force to. To start to look at the process and, and to take what we want to use and not take what we don't want to use.
Totally up to you.
And did you go to the conservation meeting this week? Do you know what they're working on for?
I guess it is. The gentleman that is supposed to be working that isn't going to be there till, back till May.
Oh, okay.
But they were very kind enough to, to chat about what was going on, and what was on their side of the, but they were working on, so we'll be able to line that up. They're looking at the same thing, looking at the checklist, correct me if I go off the rails here, but looking at the checklist to see what. Kind of conservation things could, might be missing, or could be added, or, you know, from what that lands on, right?
So we did a natural resources inventory. Update to our master plan, which included a zoning review, and one of the recommendations was to. Look at putting some solar zoning in there, so the Conservation Commission headed that up, and so they have someone on their committee that is also looking at the zoning.
Okay.
Piece of it, so that's why we're, it makes sense to work together.
Yeah, yeah. So, and, and you, you told me earlier you're on the Conservation Commission, so has the Conservation Commission reached out to NHACCC? The New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commissions, or gotten an email, they're, they've been doing some presentations this spring. On solar and conservation and how they can either work together or collide. There's some good resources out there, if you did have them reached out to NHACCC, yeah.
Yeah, you know, we're on their mailing list.
Okay. But.
Well, I mean, if you.
So I guess that was my, the other thing I wanted to just make note of is that they're looking at it as well, and it makes sense for us to be part of that conversation.
So there's no reason for us not to sign this.
Right.
This is.
Acknowledgement that.
Yeah, so I'll, so I'll sign that, yeah.
It's just to say you've looked at it and.
And it says it right there in the document.
Yeah.
Not an endorsement or recommendation, or changing or updating the zoning code, it's informational only.
It's a jail sentence, though.
Violation.
Yeah, make sure he writes his own name.
I don't check items.
Yeah.
Looking at the, the homework assignment, it looks like the second one would be handled with Christmas meeting today. Because we, it talks about homework, having a discussion, meeting with the planning board.
Which we did.
Which we did, and, and just sending proof as a meeting minutes that we discussed. Soul Smart and the effort, so that'll, that'll take care of homework for March.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yes, perfect. Yeah, that's perfect, thank you. And I'll share that with them. But any other questions? I mean, you have my email address, it's on there with Sarah's emails. Leave job to me if you have any question. I found our answers, posting the recommendations, like, and the whole team, that's all smart, but helping us out, so.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any, any else?
No, and you'll be here tomorrow night, though.
No, it's Thursday, no, they, no. They had to reschedule.
Oh, yeah.
There's a conflict to, for the building tomorrow night, and so they rescheduled the next week. There's a conflict to, for the building tomorrow night, and so they rescheduled the next week, but that's a conflict for Frank, so.
Right.
To be de- determined, I think, still.
Is this is for the task force?
Yes, the renewable energy task.
Yeah, I'm, I'll email, I've been emailing with Dev. We haven't been able to connect on the night, but, um, at some point we will.
Yeah, I just asked her to include us so we can. Um, you know, be there to hear what you're.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And having Conservation Commission members present is also a great thing to have, um, anything to answer is easy to done.
Yeah, active.
Yes, exactly, because this is threatened at all groups bring up and try to address all of them, so.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you for having me and thanks for participating in this. And, um. I can give you. A sheet describing what, what I do for all the towns, and this is on our website.
Thank you, you too. Do you wanna give this to Kathy? Pass that down, Dan, it, are you, you're, add it. Um, I'm not able to go on Thursday, are you available?
Yeah.
Is anyone else able to go Thursday? It's Zoom, yes.
Twelve to one thirty.
And that's just office hours, so it's just questioning.
No, this Thursday, it's the planning and zoning month.
Oh, that was.
Yeah.
Yep, local one thirty.
Yeah. Nope, that's March, hang on. Yep, twelve.
Local one thirty?
You zoom. And it doesn't give the link in the here and I, on mine, it's a clickable link, so.
And that was the email from Sarah Brock, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's, I think that, that, you know. Valuable thing is this guy right here.
Yes, it is.
The whole timeline and everything, it's the, the soul smart and it's homework, so, uh, maybe we can.
Put that on the drop ups.
Yeah, but, uh, oh, there's a way that. Hey, this, this one.
Yeah.
They have a lot of documents.
Is it on Google?
They do have a lot of.
It's already out, they already have. It's just.
It's in the Google.
It's in the drop, Google Drive. The, uh, yes, I think it is in the Google Drive.
Okay, I can go back.
Is there a way to like.
What is it?
Quote market or?
Yeah.
It's the cohort. Guide.
Yeah.
Or handbook.
That's the thing, is there's, there's an awful lot of documents they have, but if this helps people take this down.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I could.
Like, on your computer, if you can go to the Google Drive and like, share, click share on that document. And you don't need to make it through it.
No, they have a Google Drive, so smart.
Oh, so smart, so, yeah.
I just want, if I can get the source, the source document, then I can download it and then upload it to Dropbox.
Right, good, excellent. Sarah Volger, how are you? Welcome. Doing good.
Bring outside properly, finally.
Yeah.
Right now.
Don't say that.
Um, so before we dive into the memo and site plan regulation. I don't know, Christine, do you wanna kind of start us off with the engagement strategies report that's due?
Um, to be honest, I did not look at it, I, um, today. So I don't know that I could speak about it, but it is one of the requirements for the HOP grant that we submit a plan for community engagement. And, yes, and they gave us some samples or for us to look at. Um, which I, I didn't look at closely, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I looked at them, um, and I've sort of been. Brainstorming what it's gonna look like, but I guess the reason I wanna talk about it tonight is to sort of. They either, we really need to talk about this a lot tonight, or can we. Look at the schedule for May and where I fit into your meetings. And maybe I could be on within the phase.
The first meeting?
I don't, again, I don't know what your schedule is.
Well, I, well, let's talk about our schedule real quick, what, what do we have that's pressing for the next couple of months?
So the only thing we talked about for the first meeting in May was doing the hearing for the master plan updates.
The implementation chapter?
All the chapters.
All of them.
To have the hearing to just officially have a hearing, because that's how we adopt them, and then. If we decide that night to approve them, then they. Get updated and put, while they're updated now.
How long do you think that hearing's gonna last?
It depends on if people come to the hearing, it shouldn't take that long, we've had meetings for each chapter. And we've had multiple meetings for, for each chapter.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know if people will read them all. But. It's, you know, it took definitely a risk.
That was for the six that we were gonna do then?
Yeah, the first meeting in May, and I, I have.
Could be, it could be twenty minute hearing or it could be an hour and twenty.
It could be a ten minute, you know. There's no, it was updating data mainly, it was, there shouldn't be anything controversial.
It really shouldn't, yeah. Well.
So, um. I, I mean, and you're driving from Keen?
Yeah, I'm driving from Keen.
So.
Would it make sense for me to join you guys via Zoom on the six? So that even if there's only twenty minutes available to have a conversation, we can have one?
But we might have an hour. Yeah.
But we might have.
We don't, we don't know.
Right, yeah, I mean, I think if it gets to a certain point, then we can just say. Come to the next meeting. Or, or what's the deadline for that?
I don't remember. It's doing at the end of the month, so May thirty first, I think.
Okay.
Sure, anything?
Good, can we just move it to public, the, the hearing on the, uh.
We could.
Say, there's a timeframe, and after that.
And if we're not comfortable, like, if people still wanna have a comment, then we'll continue the hearing to a future meeting.
Yeah, I like that idea.
My dear is good, because half the time this doesn't work.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So, Duke, so what's, what do you think, give, as. What was it, three chapters that were?
No, it's five.
It's five.
Um, I have the thing here. The natural resources. Economic environment, population and housing, land use and implementation.
Did them so long ago.
I know, we did do them so, that's why I wanna just, like, be nice to just.
Right, I, I, I agree. Um, okay, well.
Can't we just, like, time box, like, hearing, you're saying, like.
Yeah.
By seven thirty will be done.
Seven thirty.
With that, and if we need to continue it, then.
Yeah.
We just have another hearing, I, I don't see it being, uh.
I don't either.
A, a long hearing, but, uh, we don't know.
Are we okay with that? Half hour for the hearing.
And if we need to continue it, we will.
So that, that would put you on for seven thirty.
We don't have any other hearings, right?
Um, so a little bit more information about that, um, within the scope. Of the grant, you're required to have three public events. And it's not totally clear with material that was shared. For, um. This report that's doing, if public engagement is meant to be. Things beyond events, you know, I mean, it said different public engagement strategies, including, like, surveys and focus groups. And mailers and general outreach, and so. I guess what I wanna get from you guys is an impression of what you have envisioned that strategy to look like. Because I have kind of envisioned some events that we're gonna start in September, but I started recalibrating that to maybe. Adding in additional outreach during the summer that could sort of piggyback on other things that are in half of the town. You know, and maybe create some poster boards that show. You know, like. What the PRD development at the ordinance currently stands, um. What that actually looks like as an aerial view, and then what it looks like in practice within your community, and then another board that's. Either showing a measured approach at revision or an aggressive approach at revision, depending on the direction you guys wanna take it. Um. And it'd be great if we could also do that for workforce housing, and I don't know if these would happen at the same events or separate ones, and. So I just would like a little bit of direction from you guys, which you don't have to give me tonight, but I want you to be thinking about it so that we can have. A more informed conversation about it at the next meeting.
And to make it even a little bit more complicated. We typically, and I was gonna bring it up tonight.
Yeah.
We typically, in the summer, we don't meet the first. Take the first, uh, Tuesday off.
Okay.
For July and August, we just meet once. Unless.
Unless there's an application.
An application comes up. Uh, it's kind of our vacation, uh, so that makes it even a little bit more, uh, time, yeah.
Be a little bit more, whatever, we can work on it.
Yeah, we did fourth of July for the HOP grant, and we did, we did a library event, um, for the first. Phase of it, trying to think of events that we piggybacked on to. We do one other.
I thought we did like, two more, yeah.
There were three that were on. Well.
Fourth of July.
Saturdays, there were a couple of Saturdays.
Some that were, like, standard lines.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the ones that we piggybacked on were those three.
Right.
And we did the one in the, in the town.
Twitchy Paul, I went to that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that was our, um, event, yeah.
Yeah, that was the stand-up.
Well.
So we did many events.
Yeah, we did.
Well, you guys know your town. Would be a good choice, or have been successful to piggyback on in the past, or if you think that's a terrible idea, also, I mean.
I mean, I think the Harvest Festival is definitely the best, because you have the most foot traffic.
Yep.
I feel like the other two events that we did were hard to engage with people because it, we were like the only people.
Do, yeah, and there were a few people that came over on the Ford, but, yeah, but people are.
Harvest Festival, September, like.
Third, third. Yeah, third weekend, um, how about, uh, Town Cleanup Day? That's coming right up.
That's, yeah, a couple of weeks away, I don't know that we're prepared for.
There's more, we'll, so we do that.
We might have done that.
Parade, the parade.
There are dog show on that same.
We did the dog.
Dog show.
Yeah, that's what it was, yes. So we'll have to see what the rec committee's got planned, you know. In the library, sometimes those events, and you guys have some, do you have something coming up for, um. Um, I, I, what is it called?
We have I Naturalist, that's online, though.
Okay.
We have a bio blitz in June.
Okay.
Kind of an off-site type thing, cause.
Yeah.
Hiking, so.
Right, so maybe that's not the best.
Okay, well. And do you think we need multiple in-person events or just one?
I think it's really up to you.
Yeah.
Um. You know, we are planning to have. The three events in the fall. If that still makes sense, I mean, I, I feel like it. There's, there's sort of two sides of it, on the one hand, it's good to have events before. You've gotten close to finalizing the language for the revisions, so that you can get community input and calibrate. You know, the brainstorming of the revision, but on the other hand, you wanna have good public engagement once they're. Nearly finalized, flash finalized, to get people excited about showing up and supporting the amendments. Um. So. Yeah, it's fifty fifty. Okay, well, I will come up with some things for the main six meeting, and, um, if you guys can also, again, just. Kind of brainstorm how. You think this would. Best fit within your community, both to piggyback events and the timing of the other events, you know, so that it. Doesn't conflict with other. Other important events in town, and it might be the Harvest Festival, that's. Pretty close to one of the dates we were trying to hit, though it would be great to piggyback on that.
Yep.
But we definitely don't wanna design a competing event.
Right. Right. Well, yeah, last year we kept running into, well, there was two funerals that.
Yeah, yeah.
Days that, like, of.
Yeah.
People, like, beloved citizens.
Yeah.
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 Um, so I think we should change one of our events at least.
Cut the bodies, though.
Not, not the time.
No.
Yeah, the other thing I would say is, I, and you guys can disagree with me, but I feel like the survey thing, we probably don't need to do another survey. Um. Feel like we did a lot of those, but you can disagree if I think there's.
I mean, I think it honestly, it's gonna depend on what changes we're putting forward, right, like, if, is it. Something that. Is going to. Cause a lot of. Discussion, or is it something that people are going to be okay with, right?
Right, well, and the survey can also just inform the discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because there, there are a lot of. Potential. Opportunities in the PRD ordinance. To. Make big changes or small changes.
Right.
Getting the temperature of town to be what they have an appetite for, um. I survey concern that focus as well.
Is it public engagement?
I think so.
Yeah.
Cause it might be worth, if we had. If we had sort of an idea of the things we're looking at to change.
Yeah.
Send that out somewhat early. Then at least people will be thinking about it, and people that don't want something changed will show up and.
Right, that's true.
You know, cause I'm. You say public engagement, and you just have a table at the Harvest Festival, they're not even gonna know what you're talking about till they get to the table.
Five hundred mailboxes.
Right, right.
Yeah. Is it about five hundred dollars?
Six hundred, I think.
Six hundred.
Six hundred bikes, I would tell you.
Oh, six hundred mailing.
To hit all the five hundred units in town, the five hundred roughly.
Yeah.
Uh, is that, and, but we have the money for that.
In the, yes, in the budget, yeah, yeah.
I, I agree, I think a mailer is a good idea.
Yeah.
When you put it that way.
Mailer before whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, yeah, I, I would agree, I feel like the town's a little surveyed.
So the mailer would just basically just be informational.
Yeah.
It's not a survey, it's just.
Right, just to get to, like you said, the.
But if you have a question, contact your.
Or, like, we'd have some kind of event or.
Yeah.
If you wanna have questions, come to this event on this date, or this day. One of the show, yes.
Yeah, or. Pointing board members.
Right.
I like that.
That is first eating.
There are, um, my concern is a lot of this could be complicated by whatever the state legislature passes. And I know there's a lot of. Opposition to what's being proposed, but there's also support, so I don't know which way it's gonna go. I, I think we just have to keep that all in mind. Because if they, they change, if they approve the law that says fifty feet of road frontage max and two acre.
Classics roads.
And developing plastics roads, um, you know, I think that kind of changes the discussion.
It does, it will be interesting. If those pass to see what the final language is, um. Because I'm not sure you guys are aware in the past when there have been. New laws that. Don't sound like they're coming from people who are really familiar with land use. They usually are not legal.
Ah, okay.
Um, you know, so there will be provisions within them that towns cannot adopt, and so. Then they wind up being amended in the next session, and. I'm not saying that that's precisely what's happening right now, but a lot of the language that's. That's been presented, um. It, it doesn't work in application, and so.
Yeah, that's what I'd heard.
You know, forcing communities to adopt. Um. I, I think we might see something that's carried back from, from what we're seeing right now.
Okay.
It might be like, this has to be applicable in at least. At least somewhere in your town, for this percentage, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And it also doesn't make sense in communities that do not have municipal sewage. Because you can't force the community to, you know, have lot loading, it's not.
I'd be shocked, I'd be shocked if this passes.
I know they they had the hearing today and they continued it because there was a lot of um comments.
I mean, that being said, we have towns on either side of us, no switching. Wilton, they both have two acres only, but they're not fifty feet of frontage either.
No.
And with that fifty feet of frontage provision, that could be something as simple as adding a rear lock provision to your zone ordinance. Because that would show that you do allow lots that have fifty feet of frontage, but only under certain conditions. You know, with a minimum of three or five acres and, you know.
Yeah, but bigger lot, we are live. We had some fifty meter.
Yeah, right.
But we.
Frontage, yes.
Just about sixty acres.
So I guess I just wanted to like. That it could completely derail.
It could derail.
Everything. And we could be having, you know, um public sessions on. That instead. So.
However, we're gonna forge ahead.
We are, we are, sorry to get us off topic.
So um jumping into the site plan revision, did everybody lose another?
Yes.
So should we start with um? You guys just wanna walk through item by item or how would you like to approach this?
Yeah, that because we did last time.
Yeah, do we wanna go over the changes you already made based on the last meeting or?
I would say. Only if you guys disagree with the execution of how. So everything that was discussed and approved at the last meeting and highlighted in yellow.
Yep.
I don't think we need to discuss those, right?
I don't think so, but I've wanted, let's just. Give everyone the opportunity to. And preference, I guess.
Yeah.
So the section that we left out for tonight was the.
We want to start on page six.
All right.
Yeah.
Section four. And it's B. Two, is that correct? That the first one? You need colored ink there, Bruce.
I know, I printed it out and I was going to pick my highlighter in my, I know.
I like had to get a color printer because of the.
But I know the italics is is the red and.
Yeah.
And uh I know that that highlighting is.
And the dark highlight.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, so I know, I know.
So the discussion at the last meeting for this um primarily was on what your storm frequency. This regulation should regulate and I looked at the a lot of different things, I looked at New Hampshire Stormwater Manual, I looked at. Um the draft, the Reagan Watershed Management Plan. And I looked at. The document, which maybe it's making me right now. Southeast Watershed Alliance Model Stormwater Standards. Which is um for southeastern New Hampshire, not southeastern US.
Okay.
Um and there was nothing in the Watershed Management Plan that identified um. Design standards, they did have an objective at the end that they would like to create design standards to share with communities. But they don't.
Doesn't help us now.
Doesn't help us now.
Yep.
And so for this um. I'm recommended recommending that you guys include fifty year storm event because that lines up with um. The Southeast Watershed Alliance Guidance as well as the um New Hampshire Stormwater Manual. It accommodates the ground frequency of larger storms, but it. Will not be as costly for developers or developments to to provide and produce as planning for the one hundred year storm event. And so the way. The regulation would be rewritten, um where required under section five Q, which is storm water management. The applicant shall submit a storm water management plan that addresses runoff from design storm event as specified. In section five Q, including the two, ten and twenty-five year twenty-four hour storms. The planning board may require analysis of the fifty year twenty-four hour storm event. For projects that may impact vulnerable resources, steep slopes or public infrastructure.
Yeah, and we, and so it's fresh to us because we just uh had an applicant. That was that originally was a twenty-five year storm and then they offered. Fifty year. A fifty year. And so we've got to see it firsthand how that works, but now they did that, they volunteered.
As a result of comments.
Right, yeah, it was it was smarter than to do that, but but they didn't have to.
Yeah.
Here, this would give us, uh this would give us teeth, but this would give us an opportunity where we could actually implement this and. And request this or require this, I should say.
Right.
Yeah, and so that because like we just witnessed it and saw what could happen. Um I I think this is the right thing to do.
Yeah.
It aligns with alteration of train fifty year.
Um are there any changes you want to see in that? I should have a check next to it.
Do you think we should add where this says the planning board may require? So.
What's the criteria?
No, no, I was thinking more like, could you also add the hundred year storm? Like if we knew there was a spot that was. Probably pro to some uh flood language issues or something, doesn't say they have to, but this says we may do the fifty year. Is it worth also saying may do the fifty or and or hundred year?
Or is that, does that make it too?
I don't think there's, I personally don't think there's any reason not to, um but. These are my regulations, they're yours.
And I also want to ask a question, is there a reason we wouldn't require a fifty year? Just.
So with that, that will become a little bit more clear once we actually go through the new section five Q.
Okay.
Because. Almost everything, well, before you read what's in five Q now. Everything um like all of your multi-family conversions are potentially caught by this regulation. And so it can become a barrier to providing more housing in the communities when you're not necessarily changing. The footprint of anything or the impervious surface, and so if you just have a homeowner who wants to. Change it up a little bit so that they are a three family rather than one or two that they currently are. That can make it a much, much heavier lift, having to get engineering done just to show that they're not gonna flood their neighbor, okay, and they're not.
So that's why we bought May.
Right, right, and that's, yeah. Exactly, and and that's. Okay.
And Q gives us some guidance to when May should be.
Yeah, so I guess. I'm not gonna put a check next to this one just yet because I don't wanna wait until you guys see if you're comfortable with Q. Since they speak to each other.
Okay.
All right, the next one, uh section five, letter C. This one, um you guys had asked me to match the language to what was in the zoning ordinance. But you actually have it in the zoning ordinance twice a little bit different and the intent is the same, but I don't know which language you prefer, but I'd just like you to choose one of those two options.
So the first one is from our wetlands ordinance. And the second one is from um the conflict section, which is under administration, right? Pretty, I looked at it this afternoon, so I'm pretty sure I did, I did, that uh just to be curious, so I. I feel like the conflict one is more general, but I mean, they're both pretty similar.
Then it's the the key word is intent.
Right.
So we have to pick one. Is that what you're saying? Or we should pick one?
We should pick one.
Yeah. Let's hear pretty things.
The second one is slightly more straightforward, but.
Yeah, I was leaning towards, I was leaning towards the conflict one as well.
I was as well.
Yeah.
It's easier to read.
Yeah, yeah.
It's already in the conflict thing, which exactly was.
Right.
We tended to.
We all right with that?
So um for Kathy's sake, the one that was from article four, section twenty-nine D.
Yes.
And then moving on to section five, letter D, um. This one, you guys requested to provide it to be more concise um. And also to determine if there was sort of a a BMP guide for avoidance and that sort of thing and after a bit of research. Um one, I would say a lot of guiding material has been. Moved from federal websites where it once lived and I don't know if it's been put in new places or gone for a while. Um but what I did find is there's, there are separate documents for everything, there's, you know, all of this for air, all of this for noise, all of this for water. So I just revise what in this as a a general practice. And I'm hoping you can tell me that it makes more sense now.
The only comment I had is should it, should the words available in practices be reversed? Applicants must use the best practices available or is that? Does that change the intent? I don't know, like that implies there's best practices. To look at, I don't know. That was my only. Thought on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, what would that hurt? Maybe it makes more sense to say best practices available.
That makes sense.
Needs better. I don't see how it changes the content.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I'm all right with that change.
Okay, and you know, on that one?
On E? The next one right below that? Consider revising this language you have.
Oh, yeah, that's for you guys still, has anybody considered? I can't revise that one for you because it's not.
Well, oh. Okay, well, um I I learned that the select board approved the complete streets policy. This week, this is last week, last week. Um so I didn't know if there was anything we could take out of that to match.
Yeah. Probably.
Yeah, and I might have. I might have printed that, but if if it's not in the scope, then we can. Look at it or I can send something to.
Just grab a sentence and send it to me and I'll throw it.
Okay, sounds good, and then we can look at it.
Okay, moving on to five Q, um. I guess. Let's see, we have outlined this in. Let's see the key changes, um. First one being structure and and clarity, um so the whole section was reorganized and a lot of the language that. Was difficult to understand has been kind of toned down a bit and um. You know, we have the um. Apprentability and thresholds. General requirements, design and performance standards, um. Performance requirements and. I have also created a glossary that I did not include in the document yet because I want you guys to let me know what words. You want to be defining and whether you want the glossary to live within this section or within the whole document. But let's, should we just start at the beginning um with? Section five Q one, which is the intent, um. If you want. Let me know if you want changes, is that the best way to do this?
Sure.
You don't wanna read this on page two.
She's the trooper. I I thought it was, I liked the new format.
Yeah.
Although I have to say it felt more intimidating.
I think it's more protective.
Yes.
We had turned pages, so let's pause for a second, do we have any changes for the purpose and intent, just section one? Nah, I think it's. Okay, and I should also just make sure everybody is fully aware that there is a provision within this section that. Redirects you to the waiver section um so that anything, you know, an applicant knows that anything within this and. The board knows anything in this section can be waived if it's unreasonable for the project. Okay, now you may review section two.
Well, this is just for site plans, not some.
Correct, I mean, some subdivision will be subject to this if you're awful building, um but that would be if they're coming in for site plan. Do you have any? Questions or changes for um we want to A? For who want to be, is there way different?
We already have a hundred foot setback. These buildings, I can't remember, buildings that have some ones. Or accepted. Yeah, I'm thinking something else. Seventy-five feet, seventy-five foot, okay.
That's per septic to wetland, seventy-five feet. I don't know if we have a building.
For for wetlands, yeah, I think we do.
I think there's something else.
Cause someone on the.
I'm just wondering, I mean, it doesn't matter, but if it's located in a hundred feet of water or wetlands, I'm just wondering would that ever happen?
Provided that you do, I mean, so right now, um. In some extent, the the shoreline. Are they shoreline protection? I can't remember the word right now, but you know, that that restricts development, you know, within certain buffer zone of the shoreline, but. It doesn't necessarily pivot, you still can get permitting for that to exist, even though the state is regulating it and I'm not sure um. What you guys have there, but even if say you have a hundred foot building setback from a shoreline or wetlands, is it a no disturb? Buffer or is it just setback?
I think we will fifty foot, no disturb.
Seventy five feet.
Don't even, yeah, isn't there a tool?
This is for wetlands setbacks, no structures, temporary or permanent shall be constructed or installed within seventy five feet of the reference line of the water body. Except as described below.
And that's what our septic setback is seventy five feet as well.
Yeah, but there's also a fifty foot vegetative buffer.
Fifty foot vegetative buffer, yep.
So nothing can happen within the fifty feet anyways.
So, and this is also a little bit different. It's saying that you would have to provide a storm arm plant. And, and it can be changed if you don't like the hundred feet.
I just didn't know. I was thinking we had a hundred foot from something, but I could be mixing it. Regulations on her.
So if we had seventy five feet, we'd be more consistent with their.
Yeah.
Rest of our zoning. Wouldn't that make more sense? Stay consistent with our. Building and septic setbacks.
It would seem kind of like if you have a building setback for seventy five feet, but you can't do anything with a hundred feet without that.
Well, again, this isn't saying you can't do anything to a hundred feet. You need, we need a storm on our plan. I think that's probably.
Yep. Um, I just had, there's a typo in the note on the last line. Even if they not meet the exemptions. Under, it's still number two, there's a note, the planning board retains authority under section seven waiver, waive or modify.
Are you on page nine?
Yeah.
Yes, page nine. Sorry, did I? I was looking at the other thing. Yeah.
So we're saying two A.
Yeah, I think so. Okay. Now let's get to B.
It seems weird there.
Let's take these letter by letter. I think because this is a large section. So, three A. And five Q, three A.
Well, I mean, that's. Russ, that's really talking your language there. Does that seem like normal verbiage for? Hydrology?
I guess if you were talking about like the. What's coming on in the site, you know, it's leaving the site in general. But I would think that site design should maintain existing drainage patterns. I mean, lots of times it's all point is. Like the, the storage units. Those two manmade swales, they had the side and everything, those all got filled in and they put in underground. Catch basins and pipes and stuff to handle the. Site. Drainage, I don't know.
You want to lose the first sentence today? I mean, those swales will put in at some other point. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's not like the original.
Yeah, I didn't, I feel like it's saying. Development has to be the same as it was when it started. You know, that's the whole point with using a site plan is to redevelop that land to park a lot of buildings or.
It's saying that water conditions on the site need to be the same.
But they wouldn't to the greatest extent.
Yeah, you know, because you don't want to prevent water from leaving the site that used to leave the site. That can dry up wetlands and streams and other things that, that rely on. Surface recharge, but you also don't want to flood your neighbors or degrade downstream water bodies. Or anything like that. So this is, you know, maintaining. Conditions to the greatest extent practicable. And like with AOT standards, that's something that they outlined is. You know, while yes, you can drop a bomb on the site. The water is going to be the same.
Right. So we're talking when it leaves the site, if it's leaving it. Over here at the street, we want to make sure that it's going there. If it's going into this wetlands, it's still going there. So the water volumes. Leaving the site remain the same.
The volume and the velocity.
And the velocity.
And hopefully the quality.
Right.
What if?
It's hard for me because you're still changing the site. So to say the site that I have.
But it also says should. Yeah, I mean, I feel like that's somewhat.
What if somebody captured the water runoff and? Didn't, they used it? Like, I see the word evaporation. Imagine that if your neighbor downstream was counting on that water.
Right, it's the one.
They dried on their wetlands.
The stream or.
Or their pond.
And you've dried it up, yeah.
I got, the only reason I thought that was because I saw the word evaporation. Of thinking. What else would you have for evaporation?
Yes, the greatest extent practicable, practical kind of gives you. Use some potential.
Yeah.
Well, and I guess to kind of put this. In practice a little bit and look, looking at the storage facility. So the drainage of that site existing. Mostly is going down to the water body that's downhill.
Kind of sheet flow channels a little bit on the edges, but mostly sheet flow.
Right, and that, I guess that's been a problem from. Some whatever I read, like maybe the velocity is too fast and that could have been from the initial development on the site. So the greatest pattern is water is leaving the property. In this area at this velocity, at this amount and volume. And so I believe, are they maintaining that with the addition and redevelopment? Or are they changing the drainage on that site?
No, they changed it. They actually reduced the. Pollution.
Yeah.
They improved, so then velocities are reduced and the, a lot of the non-precious pollution is captured. Therefore, so it has changed.
Okay.
But I think it's. Better than, the idea, it's like better than what's happening now.
Okay.
But I don't know. If this addresses. If this number A will allow that. Well, let's say that, you know. By reducing that water flow down, did we take away water? In, in my group.
Right.
And, and, and we hit back downstream. I mean, all of us were looking at, we didn't want to mess with Brooke. We didn't want it to, we didn't want to add contaminants. We didn't want to change the flow. On the other hand. If we did, if we agreed to do stuff that slowed that flow down, technically we changed the water flow.
Right, that, that's why I brought that up.
Yeah.
Never, we never thought of it that way.
No, I don't. Even improving the pollution thing, well, maybe those are nutrients that something in the stream needed.
But you're also adding many more buildings, parking lot, like things that don't exist today. Like to that water flow going off of the site. So yes, it was changed.
With tunnel vision though.
But, but at the same time, it couldn't have really stayed the same with what they're trying to do. So it had to change.
Well, I guess the question is, how did you as a town feel about that change? And did you want to be able to have more control over that change and more oversight of that change? And I guess that's really what this provision speaks to, is if there's a desire. To be able to. Reduce those changes or have a voice.
Yeah, well, we.
To have a voice. Anyway, lucky that they were changed it.
There was a little, a little, a little pushback, right, from. So he can watershed and from Wilton Planning Board and from some of the others. So we were fortunate that the engineer worked with us and was able to. Make some changes. But they didn't have to. And so this.
This would say the.
This, this will help us to build.
Yeah, and I think everything is probably going to be a. A different scenario that you have to address differently, right, like.
I'm definitely not going to capture it all.
No. Also where we have the blanket waiver provision.
So where do, where are we at, Russ, then? Do we just leave that language the way it is?
I guess, I guess if.
You can revisit it if you.
Or if we feel that, that it's, it wouldn't. It just, it seems to me like what it's saying is you wouldn't necessarily be able to do a site plan at all because. Any site plan is going to change the site drainage. I mean, that's just what it's going to do.
But I think, I think you're saying to the, like, the greatest extent. Practical, like. Wait, try not to do something dramatically.
Absolutely saying be, be considerate.
Right.
Consider the impact.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so, so now. Your applicant feels like they've done, with their engineer done is, they've done. The. I just lost the show. They've done.
What they think's right.
Right, the, yeah, yep, and. To their extent practical, and, and so they, you know, I can see this in the, you can end up in court. With a lawyer saying, well, then interpret that with, what's practical? Tell me what's, what's practical. I guess I could just see that.
Where we have to get another opinion.
Yeah, because I mean, that's, that's kind of. I mean, they might think that they've done a lot. They, they did everything practical in their opinion, the applicant.
Yeah.
And then we say, well, we made you jump through nine hoops and, and, and they're, they're going to say, well, you know. We're going to say, well, we got ten more. And they're going to say, well, nine was enough. And you'll be, you'll be hearing from our lawyer. I mean, if somebody has enough money, they will.
Yeah, but we have the right to get a third party review, which could.
True.
Concur there, whatever they present or could say, well, they could do a little more.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure this is like the.
Yeah.
In. I don't know.
I wish there was a better way to word it.
I guess, yeah, I guess like I look at B. And there's technical requirements.
Right.
And it's very easy, it's a cookbook. You're doing a site plan, you, here's, here's regulations, I will follow this. And now, you know. A seems like it's a hard thing to, it's very. Subjective kind of. Broad overview maybe, and it, it doesn't have any. I don't know. That's just my.
Maybe we should, after we read the rest of.
Yeah, yeah, let's do the other one. What could be?
Right, because these are all very specific things that you follow.
That, that's probably my bias from my background. Is that? I like to have numbers. I like to have rules. I will follow this on, you know, lead it up to interpretation. You don't want to get in trouble later on because someone said you didn't do what you were supposed to do. And I say, no, I did exactly.
Yeah. Well, along those lines. We don't ever define. What the steep slope, like what are we? What's our cut?
Yeah, I feel like you talked about it a couple places in the zoning, but I can't remember if you're at twenty five percent or if you're fifteen or if you talked about.
I, I don't remember seeing.
Don't recall any percentage.
Oh, unless it's in like wind energy or, you know.
It might be, it might be buried in one of those sections.
One of those various, or the mountain district.
Yeah, it doesn't, there is not like a place where it's, you know, a steep slope ordinance, and I don't believe it's in your definitions.
It's not.
You don't have the, you know. Deep slope.
No, I love for that too.
It's.
I don't, I feel like I've searched through the zoning for that before and not, not found anything.
Page twenty, it says. It's about steep slopes in excess of twenty five percent.
Conservation.
Yeah, it's not, that's the mountain.
Mountain district.
We see some percentages and let's talk about fifteen percent.
In the rural residential?
The mountain.
In the mountain, conservation only.
Just a Google search, and steep close, steep slopes are legally defined as hillside with a fifteen footer greater vertical rise over hundred. Or a fifteen percent slope. You know, but my, my question to that is legally where?
Right, right.
Federal, state, you know, that's, that was a copilot answer, but. Actually, it's N C E S C.
We don't have no. Arizona.
No. So I've seen towns have either fifteen or twenty five adopted. You don't usually see different than that. I think maybe I thought thirty percent steep slope ordinance, which is. Quite steep. They also tend to crop up in driveway regulations.
Yeah.
And that one usually closer to eight percent. I don't know if any of it's the textbook.
No.
Yeah, I see another reference to twenty percent, so it, it sounds like fifteen, twenty, somewhere around there. And that goes back to that practical, practicable, you know, because that's where the legal side would look at and say, well. I got all these articles that say steep slope is fifteen percent. You guys are trying to say this ten percent of sleep is, is steep, so. You know, sorry, you lose.
I feel like we looked at what the state's driveway requirements were, and they had a definition somewhere in there, but.
I think septic is pretty steep.
Yeah.
It's like thirty five, thirty three percent or something.
I think we should pick a number.
Steep slopes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would think like for looking at this one, these general requirements, B, I would say I'm good with all of these. But maybe steep slopes ought to have a. A definition somewhere. I did a search, narrowed it down to New Hampshire. I'm getting. Some different results, but. a lot of the towns have.
They're all over, yeah.
Will have ranges, zero to fifteen is okay, fifteen to twenty-five is like cautionary, and then your twenty-five plus is.
Well, we have mountains.
Yeah, so we.
Yeah.
We're not in Kansas anymore.
Was one of the issues with the um um, storage facility.
Yeah. It was, what do you drive where, Russ?
Exactly, yeah.
Fifty percent slow.
Well, so what's the, what's the answer, so we can move forward?
Maybe we put twenty-five as a placeholder and then revisit. That seem reasonable?
That was the only change for B. For twenty-five percent slope as a placeholder. How about C?
Who's currently? Those guys did it, their storage, they need bio retention and vegetative swale, they switched over to all of that stuff. Oh, Nottingham hasn't said it fifteen.
Are you back on steep?
Yup, Nottingham's over by the seacoast.
Yeah.
Everything over two percent are theirs. Get back with the program.
So what are we on? We're on, on G?
Yeah. But then, do you have any changes they wanted to come in?
I think he is just missing a period at the end of the. Sorry. I haven't looked everywhere, I just noticed it just now.
We're all good with E?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So could, can you give us some examples on that one, sir, on G? The soaps and everything.
Those places are required to capture and deal with it rather than.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, you have that old tank or something in that.
Yeah, there's that place in, and we said in Greece, it's like Green Hill, that it has like a mustard factor.
Oh, yeah, the Pilgrim, Pilgrim Foods, yeah. Washing the sap, the sap and the syrup, that's right, yup, he does.
But his, his stuff comes out, goes into that hole. When he, when he breaks it down.
Yeah, reverse, he does reverse osmosis, yup, yup. Reverse osmosis.
Um, I don't know what they're using, but they have to, perhaps their tree is, they can't put it.
They could just dump beer into the ground, right, yeah.
Yeah, when you're cleaning out the match and all of that stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, that's illicit, there you go, so now we know. So then G's good, yeah.
Okay, moving on to section four.
Keeping in mind we gotta get to your landscaping. Okay, good.
I don't see a problem with A. Um, Russ said vertical separation of two feet from a seasonal high water table.
Yeah.
Is that typical? Must, I mean.
Yeah. It's kind of the same as like with the virus subject, subject system.
Two foot, yeah. So where's good with B?
What's the asterisk for?
On the next page. So that threw me off too.
It's on the asterisk on C.
It was a note.
Okay.
And the note again references steep slopes, so.
There, so where's good with C?
Yeah, let's say C, you have the asterisk, don't it goes with it.
You want me to make a note for the steep slopes there to be twenty-five percent?
Yeah, unless we're gonna define it somewhere generally for the whole document.
I don't want you to find it.
Yeah.
You should just give them definitions, cuz it's gonna be a pain in the butt to go filtering through this whole thing, trying to figure out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's seem like normal language to you and D, Russ?
Are there other situations we may request additional review other than experimental or proprietary?
Well, you can request additional review for anything in all of this, so that may not be necessary.
Or maybe if you just even add it or not consistent with the stormwater on that.
Yeah.
Cuz if they're, they're just doing something totally different, it might not be experimental or proprietary, it just might be.
But then also, but, but it may be not consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, that's good.
Um, should I keep experimental or proprietary, but just do not consistent?
I would say not, I would add non-consistent.
Yeah, or the work, proprietary or. So I was jumping ahead to G and I, cuz I don't have a problem with F, I don't, if anybody else does, but G, that was a sensitive issue for the storage unit with the salt.
What was the state program called? I can't remember now.
Something.
Green Pro, no.
Certified.
Snow Pro?
What was their, their issue?
Yeah, I think they didn't want regular salt treatment for the parking lot to go into the stormwater runoff down to the brook.
Right, green, that was the Sohegan watershed shed, there, there was their recommendation.
Developers pushback on it, so I guess.
Oh, I think he agreed to it. The other thing was in our zoning, um, we don't allow storage of um materials, like ice, whatever. The ice, snow, yeah, that stuff, sorry, getting late.
Yeah.
Um, near a wetland or near a water body, so that was part of the issue. It's called, um, it's from New Hampshire D E S, Green Snow Pro, Commercial Green Snow Pro Certification.
But we're not um saying that we would not, I mean, not every, somebody these situations is gonna have stormwater runoff that's gonna actually go into a brook.
Right.
So it would be maybe a special situation where you would wanna request something like that. Like what happened at the.
Right, right.
Do you need an appropriated change into G?
Well, it seems like it's.
I mean, we could say like, um, the snow pro, green snow pro is encouraged, but it's not required.
Is that a, a product or is that a state?
It's a state certification.
Certificate, okay.
It's through New Hampshire D E S. No removal contractors can apply for the certification.
Yeah.
And I, I think it was cheap, it was, it, it was like fifty bucks or something.
And then wait, and then we have the ability to.
Yeah, it's not a real.
Case by case basis.
Right, yeah, right.
Now, where are we? Down to five, yeah.
Well, these were all things that they submitted.
Yeah.
I'm good with five, everybody else is?
Yeah.
The last one in that section.
Yeah, yup, and then we talk about that as well.
Yeah.
At the, because, you know, somebody needs to clean those to clean the sister, I don't know what I'm gonna call them, the uh
Yeah.
Catch basins and things, they have to be maintenance, it's be cleaned out. And if you have it written on the plan or in the, in the deed, then it it'll, it'll have to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So D is a little vague on the security, like how would we determine what that would be? We don't, we have language similar to that in our zoning, but there's no definitions on what I'm, um, D.
Sixty?
Um, yeah, R, landscaping and screening, isn't that what we're on?
No, no.
You said five, it's all done, so I was on to number, yeah, I was on to R, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Moving on to landscaping and screening.
There we go.
All right, I'm, I'm jumping ahead like you are.
It's quarter nine.
I know.
We have about fifteen minutes, I think we can do this in fifteen minutes.
We can do that in fifteen minutes, however, I just wanna bring everybody back to that one provision earlier on page six.
Yep, where it refers to five Q.
Yeah.
Okay.
To make sure to see if you guys are comfortable with that now that you know what's in five Q.
Hey, so we're just saying here, you're gonna adhere to five Q.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
It makes, it makes more sense now, I guess, but we just spent that half hour doing that.
Okay, now, um, five are one general standard. Well, Christine, you were concerned with D.
I was, that may require security, but there's nothing to tell us what that amount would be.
Well, you wouldn't have an amount, please, it would depend on the site plan. If they're just putting them on tree, maybe it's a hundred bucks. All kinds of landscaping, you could give thousands.
So is it determined by the plan? Is that what you're saying?
I would, I would think the plan and the, and the installation costs, so it would really depend on you know, like a Home Depot with a thousand trees out in their parking lot versus maybe you have to put in one tree across the street. So you couldn't, you couldn't give a, a number because you wouldn't, it wouldn't be fair.
Well, no, I'm not saying a number, I'm just saying like, is there some criteria that we would consider?
But like, to define.
Security of ten percent.
Exactly, like, just, uh, ten percent of what? The total cost of the landscaping plan, or, you know, just some definition there would be helpful.
What do we do for a road?
At the road agent determines.
Bond?
There is no definition for that, that's what I was saying earlier.
Oh, a new, you mean a new road?
New road.
Yeah, we just haven't had any in a long time, but I think when we have had some divisions, the builder has had to put up a bond.
Right, yeah, but the road agent determines how much, what it's gonna be.
Agreed, agreed, yeah.
Is it a full amount? We, he just makes, decides whatever. I would think you'd want to fill them out. Cuz if a person skips, then they just wouldn't, having half that money wouldn't do anything for you.
Yeah, whatever it would cost to pave, do you have two layers of pavement, so there's one layer, so there's, if the second layer is not finished, whatever that cost would be for that right section of road would be what the bond would be for, is what you're saying?
Well, what's, what's, uh, if we took this out, what's the risk? Cuz we're talking about landscaping, not a road, like.
Yeah.
Is, like, it's disturbance of the area, right, if there's some restoration. Is, like, it's disturbance of the area, right, if there's some restoration that needs to happen, is that what we're talking about?
Potentially, or, you know, having a bunch of dead trees and bushes because they didn't, you know, learn how to get them established.
Hmm.
So maybe just keep it may require and we just case by.
Case by case.
Figure out.
Yeah, I think that's fair, right, like you may require it in a situation where it's like right against somebody's property.
Trying to protect them.
Yeah.
Um, were you guys okay with A, B, and C? Yeah.
Yeah. Sure.
I mean, no, nobody's gonna enforce that. Three, three inch, you know, six inch trees, that's.
No, but it's good to have it there. Because if the development is particularly vulnerable and they put in, you know, a one and a half inch caliber tree, it's gonna take longer to.
Yeah.
Establish, it's more likely to die.
Yeah. So we'll probably, we'll probably, it probably never come up, but it protects us.
I think it's good to have in there.
Yeah.
As a guidance too, as they're making.
Nine times out of ten, we'd probably never have to enforce it and we wouldn't care if it was an inch and a half caliber, but, but I guess if you were saying that, yeah, I guess it makes sense.
I get G, understanding, so you're saying you don't want landscaping, there's one big mulched area. Cheese and bushes, it doesn't, does this, I have it right ahead, does this give you any numbers?
Um, it does get numbered for trees, but it doesn't get numbered for bushes and other types of plantings.
So there's no percentage, so. Technically, you could have a big huge mulched area and put a D in the middle, honestly, see.
Oh, good point.
Like, I'm just wondering, it's, cause like I said, I like to have numbers and presenting, I wanna know, like, I'm gonna estimate something, how many bushes am I buying, is that? I'll just keep H two, L two five.
Yeah, I don't know about K though. I mean, I guess.
Isn't that in our CBA or, or?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of, I'm just trying to think of, uh, businesses in town like Wheelin's Auto. You know.
They can ask for a waiver, but.
They, I mean, they, they, they had, all their neighbors did sign off and. On the, when he did that project way back when, but you can obviously see it from the road, part of the point of having a business like that is so you, you could advertise, you wanna be seen by the road, so, and.
But storage and loading here.
But that might be different than a, than a auto, you know.
Yeah, so our special exception criteria says, um, no outdoor storage of materials or equipment unless screened from the roads and surrounding properties by natural and structural means. To such an extent and in such manner as may be specifically required and approved by the planning board during site plan review.
Yeah, so that's different, that's different than, say, like using Wheelin's as an example, that's different.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a business, or like RE Marwale granted, or whatever other business you've done essay plans for. It's, it's, okay. Well, if we have it, if that's what it says, then I guess that's good.
So within that section, was there feedback other than wanting more specifically on the number of plantings?
Well, don't you go into that a little bit in the next section?
A little bit, and so I think it should be addressed in the next section, but I don't know.
Okay.
If it's enough.
Okay.
All right, I haven't read, yes, I haven't read forward, so maybe it's all.
So where are we now, two A? We, yeah.
I think that defines it well.
It doesn't say anything about shrubbery or other than, so you could just have trees as well.
Well, in, um, number four. The planning board may specify the appropriate size and composition of the landscape buffer based on site conditions.
Okay.
And potential impact on adjacent properties, so it's not giving a developer a list of, you know, any fortune which is for five hundred and thirty. I don't know if you guys want.
So it would be, it would come up in design review.
Yeah.
So, uh, we, two hundred square feet, so that we're looking at this room, we, you'd have to have two trees. Roughly. Pretty close.
Hmm.
That just gives you some perspective.
We're talking about buffering, we're talking about. Want to allow for the trees to be able to grow and not compete with each other as they grow, so that perspective. Well. Well, then that goes back to G, that I think G's probably okay. If, if we have some refined stuff over on that stage here.
Maybe G should just reference the next section.
Yeah.
The specific, per the specific standards in section two.
Good idea. Yeah, that's better.
We're moving on to two, two B.
Mm hmm.
I'm sorry, but.
Well, I put a note in here for your consideration because, um, the line of least trips between development and street to screen parking and such. Uh, two B speaks to that, but you could also just require that no parking be in front of the building. But I don't know if that's the way that you wanna do, because then you can have, you know, excessive expenses for developing driveways and parking areas and.
I don't think no parking for the building would make sense.
No, I don't think so either, it depends on the lot too, I mean, we don't wanna be. And we're not saying landscape means screening, we're just saying we want it to look nice.
Something there, yeah.
Are we moving on to three?
Yes.
Okay, and then the last thing, um, letter S, I just updated this to match the subdivision regulation. If any of you guys lost the end of it.
Good, the clock just struck nine.
Do we wanna look, I, I know the answer is no, but the glossary. It turns.
Yeah, I looked them over earlier.
Uh, yeah, I did too.
I didn't. I mean, what?
The only thing we talked about was steep slopes, adding some steep slope.
To, to the glossary.
Yes.
Yeah.
Then where to put this, we put this at the end of the, as part of the. You know, more than so.
End of that section of.
It feels like it's at the end to me.
Yeah.
What did we do?
At the very end of the section.
Everything's at the end.
Yeah, and the subdivision, everything was at the end, so.
I think that, then what if there's more things in the future that you.
Right.
Right, it's the place to have it.
Yeah, yeah.
And you guys still want twenty five percent for your steep slopes.
Yeah.
For now, we.
For now, we can revisit.
Yep.
We should look at it, we should go find a spot, it's twenty five percent.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, what is, when we do Randy's, I think he's got some slopes over there.
Slices, yeah.
I don't know what the percentage is, but.
Funny part is Temple Mountain is eight percent.
What?
Temple Mountain.
Oh, the road.
One oh one.
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
Chesterfield Hill is nine percent.
Nine percent, I hope they would think, oh, what's going on with my mountain?
Twenty five is pretty generous.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so next meeting, um, we'll discuss the engagement strategy and, um, we're gonna start talking about the planned residential development.
With workforce housing.
You'll give us an updated version of the site plan, and is the, I can't remember, is the plan to leave the site plan review until we're done with the zoning? Or can we do, move forward on just adopting site plan?
It's you guys, you should go ahead and move forward with adopting site plan regs, um, there's merit to doing it both ways because once. You figure out what the final language is going to be.
It's old now. It was just before you joined, it's like February.
New regulations that feel icky with your site plan.
Right, well, my concern is, and this is, which has come up before, but our current site plan regulations refer to the subdivision regulation sections, which we reordered. Okay, those references are not accurate anymore.
And you can also just adopt this and revisit it.
I think, I think that's, personally, I think that's what we should do, but. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'll plan to have a, a finalized version for you guys at the next meeting, um, because there are a couple of changes that are being incorporated.
Mm hmm.
I will call up the final version.
Okay.
I wanna make sure you guys approve of them, um.
Yep, and I'll try to get you some language for complete streets.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Feel like this is a victory, you guys.
Yeah.
Got through a lot of material tonight.
That's good.
We look forward to seeing you again, we should try to stop, not do this nine o'clock thing though.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, that being said, I mean, how much of this, rest of this agenda do we wanna, what's press, what, what do we have to talk about here?
The only thing.
This could take another half hour right here, it was.
Right.
We talked about.
We already talked about the hearing, which was on my list, and then, um, just an FYI, we got a request to try to count how many.
Again, Sarah.
How many ADUs, we had the, um, New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs, Office of Planning and Development, and working with UNH. Um, to just do a survey, it's by no means, um, going to be a hundred percent accurate, but they're just looking for information on ADUs. I contacted Carol in the office and she put me in touch with Evan from Avatar, is that his name, Evan? Right, yeah, after Avatar.
Over.
Yeah, right, and, um, so if anyone's curious, um, I counted fifty five, more or less, and I told them there's definitely a margin of error. Um, and there were seventeen, excuse me, seventeen detached and thirty eight plus or minus attached. Um, and Carol reported that she has not seen an increase in requests for ADU permits, none were, um, permitted and then not constructed. And then it asked about challenges and there didn't seem to be anything, and would we want to meet with the, the UNH students for an interview and. Maybe was not an option, so. I said, yes, we'll see if they ask, but I put in the notes like, these are my best guess, this is not, like, I'm not looking at every house, but I can. Um, if anybody's curious, if he had, um, the designation is two family or three family, um, and then, um, if there's an extra kitchen. But, you know, if I read in the notes, some of them were clearly like, there's a kitchen, but it's used as an office, it's not used as a residence, so was just. Uh, you know, guesses.
Yeah, yeah, well, most of the ADUs and Temple, attached ones at least, were probably done without a building permit and, or done before we even adopted ADUs.
Well, that was the other question, how many were done prior to twenty seventeen, when the state changed the law, and I was like, there's no, there's no data for that, I.
Probably a lot.
Have no idea.
A lot of those, how many actually came through and said, this is a permit for an ADU?
Yeah, right.
I, it's probably this many.
Right, right, and, and there's no note in the tax database.
Yeah.
It was just guessing.
It's guessing, yeah.
Yeah, so I made that clear.
Thanks for doing that.
Um, with help from Carol and Evan, so.
Yeah.
That's just an FYI.
Yeah, and if you guys all read the agenda, you could see all the updates. Or all the, you know, the, everything going on at Concorde and.
Yep.
All the workshops and different things, so.
Yep.
That being said, unless you have something Christine's pressing.
The only last thing I wanted to mention is I haven't seen any activity over in the all purpose storage expansion. Their ZBA approval expires May twenty first, so unless they close things out with us, before then, they're gonna have to start all over again, so maybe worth a phone call. To just find out where things stand.
Yeah, I asked Carol if there was any, anything in the office or such, I hadn't heard of things, so. And I, and I, I had mentioned that exactly.
I mean, and the weather.
The other day, so I think they, there's ZBA, uh, I can't imagine they would let that.
It was in our notice of decision, I made note of that date.
Of the ZBA.
Yeah, because ours didn't expire, but the ZBA.
There's does.
Expires, so.
I would think that they would be.
Couldn't they ask for an extension?
They can, they'd have to go to the ZBA for that, though, not, not to us, ours doesn't expire. But they haven't closed out their application with us yet.
They haven't, no, we.
They haven't.
They always money and.
My Lars and.
The My Lars, yeah, we, they haven't, it's far, it's not final as far as where.
I'm guessing somebody hasn't paid it all.
Sorry.
They said from a business point of view, my guess is somebody didn't pay a bill, so somebody's not.
Oh.
So.
Yeah, I don't, our application is not final, their approval's not final.
I could call Chuck from Fieldstone if you want me to.
I think it's on them, it's their project, and if they want to.
I know, they should know.
So, I'm not worried about it.
They should know their deadlines.
Right.
I got the owner on myself. I sold the one with Pete, bro.
Oh, the, uh, storage units?
The storage unit, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not getting it, I'm just starting that.
I know, I know, there was, it wasn't a very popular project.
Yeah.
Um, but.
Yeah.
On the other old business, Pete Bunce Snyder's, I got state subdivision approval this morning.
Oh, great.
That's quick.
And, yeah, it was like, real quick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, boys are setting, uh, uh, pens tomorrow morning, so I'll turn in the Mylar tomorrow.
There's.
All the other stuff.
I think Carol's not in on Wednesday, it's usually.
That shows you how fast you get a state approval.
Yeah, yeah, they've been pretty quick in the past.
Two weeks.
Super fast.
That's quick.
Yeah.
Well, not in two weeks, in like three days.
So then someone will need to go over to, um, Hillsborough County Registry deeds at some point, once those are.
Oh, yeah, I signed, I signed a Mylar down at the office and, uh, so you need to go down and sign it as secretary.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and Pete.
Yeah, and Pete, uh, well, it was for Randy's. Um.
I was, no, he didn't do.
I don't know that he has to, cause he didn't do it, that's because it's on a subdivision. It's just a lot like.
It's just a lot.
Pete's names there, but I don't think he has to sign it.
So I need to go to town.
You gotta go sign it and then, and then somebody has to deliver the, is it just the one mylar to the?
Yeah.
The national or the registry?
Or.
Wait till Thursday, cause then I'm, uh.
Do them the same time.
Yeah.
Then I'll have to run down, cause I have to sign it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thursday.
Thursdays the day.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just ask for the hearing? Do we want the hearing to start at seven oh five? If you have some.
Sure. Yep.
And do you want me to send up? Yeah, um, for that, or?
Geez. If you want. And, uh, just to, I can read it quickly pursuant to the R S As that are applied, the planning board will hold a public hearing on May sixth, twenty twenty-five. At seven oh five at the Temple Town Hall, and proposed amendments to the town of Temple, master plan. Have a typo there. Um, the following chapters have been reviewed and amended to reflect current conditions, and then I listed them. A full copy of the text and proposed amended chapters is available for review in the town office during regular business hours or online at, and I haven't uploaded anything yet, so we'll have to get those. And, um, the notice will have to go in the paper, so I'll have to send it actually by nine A M tomorrow, so I'll probably do it when I get home tonight. So I'll send you an electronic version.
Okay, I can do the posting around here on the website.
Perfect. And you can sign it if you want, or I just normally just.
Yeah, you're placed here.
I could say, there's a mistake, I don't, I don't usually, I, nobody usually signs them, I just usually submit them, but this was the O P D's sample, so I just. Picked from the handbook.
Making motion to a judge. You both, you both, everybody, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Good.